Okay. So, we are at item number nine now. Competitive procurement at the solid waste recycling and organic material collection services. And we have Steve Kragor.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. On November 28th, you directed the release of a request for proposals for the competitive procurement of solid waste recycling and organic material collection service. The firm that is handling the process for us is Sloan-Vazquez McAfee, and we have representatives from that firm with us this evening. There have been, I believe, about six milestones, markers, that have, we've passed since November 28th, which leads us to March 6th tonight. And so you will have a presentation from Sloan-Vaz-- pardon me, Sloan-Vazquez McAfee now. All right? Super.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. Thank you for having us back again this evening. We are at another milestone in the process, as the city manager said, but we're not at the end of the process. This is an important step that we've reached, and we wanted to update you on the process that has been achieved, and also get your input and direction on what steps to take At the start of the process, process goals were established by the council. Integrity and transparency in the process, competition to be achieved among proposing companies, that we were to seek high-performance standards, value for the ratepayers, and that ultimately we wanted to enter into a contract with fair terms and conditions. And throughout this, what has stayed with me has been your focus on competition, ensuring that through this process, the best possible value is achieved, and that no stone is left unturned as we look to really secure the best possible future in solid waste for the residents and the businesses in Yuba City as you move forward. And we're pleased to be here to update you on where we're at in that process. This was a very successful RFP in that five very, really reputable companies decided to participate. You had five companies competing to come here to Yuba City and provide services, and each of these companies are known throughout the region. They all have reputations for providing great services, and they all put in a great deal of time and effort to respond to the proposal. And we certainly appreciate and applaud their effort to step forward and take a chance at providing services here for the residents and businesses. Atlas, Recology, Republic, Waste Connections and Waste Management, as we'll refer to them throughout this evening. Now, in addition to having process goals such as integrity and transparency, and then competition, we had program goals. And this is where I'm not able to say that we've met those program goals yet. We are looking for your direction so that we can move forward and ultimately meet those program goals. We were looking for consistent, reliable, and quality service, efficiency, responsive customer service, well-planned transition is critical, quality outreach and education, and there was a focus on diversion as well. So, we're looking for all of these pieces, and we believe that with your direction in these next steps, we can achieve these goals, and we're poised to achieve these goals as we continue this competitive process. Now, as you know, as part of our process, we solicited proposals, and then we evaluated them. And for the past month, I've been neck-deep, as have my colleagues, Mr. Joe Sloan, who founded our firm, and Mr. Enrique Vazquez, who also founded our firm. They're my partners. And then also, we have Sue Vaccaro, who is here with us, our senior associate. We've been, really, we take them apart. We take these proposals apart. We look within each of the criteria. We look at all the different objectives that we sought to achieve, all of the different requirements of the RFP. We compare the proposals against the requirements of the RFP, and then against their competition. And then we rank within that category. We give a certain amount of points that are earned within that category, and then once we add up all those points, that's how we arrive at the total points awarded in the ranking in each individual criteria. You might think of it as a test. So, in each criteria, it's a test, and there's a number of answers that have to be judged. And do they get 100% of the answer right, 90%, 80%? What does that look like? And then we tabulate the score. It's important to note, though, and we discussed this at length throughout the process, this is just a tool. This is a way for us to filter through a very complex set of proposals and really understand, not at first glance or at the surface level, but deep down, what's being offered and what best meets the needs and achieves the goals that you have set forth for this community. You are not required to even consider the results, actually. They're certainly here for you to use, to consider, to take into account, but you don't have to pick the highest proposer. You don't have to take our recommendations. We're just bringing them forward as we've been asked to do, and providing the information in the best way that we can as you all make the decisions for the next step forward in this process. So, with that said, I know this is a small slide, but it was in your report, we went through, in the minutia, awarding tenths of a point, and three points here and five points there, all the way through. And we arrived at, out of our thousand points, we had two of the proposers that rose above the others. And in fact, there were just six tenths of a point in difference, really, again, if we're looking at this like a test. One scored a 93.1, and one scored a 93.7. So, there's, that is why, one of the reasons why that we are coming forward to you and asking for your direction and next steps, because, you know, in some processes, you have one company that emerges and goes ahead of the pack. In some, you have multiple, and in this case, there were two companies that really set the bar and met the requirements in that way. This is just a simplified look at the rankings of the proposers within each of the criterion that was provided in the overall ranking that we assigned. Now, our recommendation is to continue this competitive process. We continue to have opportunities to achieve greater value for this community. There are some questions that are unanswered. There are some components within both of the proposals that need to be addressed and need to be negotiated. We did not include many of those components in the report because we want to maintain the city's competitive stand as much as possible. We want to protect your ability to be, to continue this competitive process. But there is an opportunity to achieve stronger value for the ratepayers as we address some of the exceptions to the draft agreement, some of the pricing strategies, some of the other terms that I'm sure that you all noticed and pulled apart as you reviewed the report. There's opportunities, and there's issues that need to be addressed. Neither of the two proposals that we're looking at right now are ready to go. They need to be negotiated. Negotiating with two proposers concurrently reduces risk for the city. It's, certainly, we've been looking at time throughout this process, and so as a matter of expediting the process, it's better to negotiate with two at the same time instead of start with one, see where that goes, and then if that doesn't reach the conclusion that the city wishes to see, having to start over with another. It continues the competitiveness of the process that is so valued by the city, and it allows us to really dig in there and address those issues, the specific items that we reviewed and that came up, and that we'd like to further discuss with these proposers. But we need your direction in order to take that step, and that's why we're here tonight. Just a few of those items, again, I'm sure that you all noticed, we want to make sure that we're enhancing the value for the ratepayers. We have some items under the rate adjustment methodology that we'd like to address, we'd like to discuss, and then do some further computations, as council has brought up on a number of times. There's some questions about tipping fees, and also where the material would go, some other issues that have come up that need to be addressed and reexamined. Another piece is the ongoing risk reduction for the city. There were some exceptions taken by both proposers that we would like to further explore and ensure that we are getting the best possible contract and the best value for the city, protecting the city from risk, achieving value for the ratepayers. Then also, and not included in our report, there were some options provided by the different proposers with alternate ways of providing the services that could potentially provide value. We'd like to explore those, and then, once we're able to fully negotiate and explore, we can bring a more robust report that doesn't diminish the competitive nature of this process or impact the city's position in negotiating. We can bring that forward, and with that information, equip you all to make the decision you'd like to make. So, we wanted to provide this update on the process, and we wanted to invite your input and direction as far as next steps, and then any of the areas of concern that you may have that you'd, if you are to direct us to move forward with the recommendation, or in whatever steps you direct us to do, what concerns may you have, and I will be taking copious notes to ensure that the next step addresses any items that have come up for you. So, that is our brief summary. I'm, again, here with my colleagues, and we're all available to answer your questions. And we've been careful not to negotiate here at the council meeting, so I've been careful in my words and choices, but we're here to answer questions, and also, most importantly, hear your direction for the next steps.
Thank you very much. You're absolutely right. We're not here to negotiate between the top two. We are here to provide the feedback and take the concerns and opinions of those who wish to speak. So, with that being said, I'll bring it back to council if you have anything you want to say at this time, or I can go ahead and open it up to the public. Nothing yet?
Oh, wait.
Okay.
Wait for the public speaker.
All right. We will go ahead and open it to the public right now, and we have a couple of cards here for speakers. Dale Hall.
Good evening, councilmen. You have a copy of my letter that I've placed on your desk. As far as the public goes, I'm just going to kind of summarize it. Through talking to the citizens of the Yuba City area and a couple of different people in the area, my consensus is that a candidate has emerged as the leader, and it's Recology. And I'm going to kind of keep it on a positive note, but, so, just for a couple of things in my letter, there must be some consideration for actually being the best for the job. That consideration must and must be actually getting the job. So, Recology has actually demonstrated that they are the best for the job according to the point score, even that I saw right here now. So, that confirms what my consensus was. So, I don't really see any reason for you to find out, you went through this process to find out who the runner-up was, so actually, the position, the job should go to Recology, and that's in my letter. So, if you guys want to, just please read the letter, and it speaks for itself. Thank you.
Just FYI, we ran out of cards, but if you do want to speak, as soon as I get through these cards, you know, the next person could go ahead and go on.
Well, I'm already here. I don't mind going first.
Well, I'm going to get through these first. Mark, can't jump ahead of the line. Always trying. Okay, next we have David Cunin.
Hello, Honorable Mayor Didball and members of the city council. My name is David Cunin. I'm the general manager of Recycling Industries that's located at Epley Drive in Yuba City. I sent you a letter earlier today. I think that's an important letter to focus on. I just wanted to highlight a few things in that letter. First off, on behalf of our company, I offer my sincerest thanks to you as a city council for recognizing the need for this RFP process. For the past seven years, Recycling Industries has advocated that the rates in Yuba City were too high. Our company has maintained that this process would result in lower garbage rates to the public, and it's clear from the bids you've received and the analysis from Sloan-Vazquez that that's the case. So, I commend you for that. I thank each of the bidders for investing the time and the money to be, to participate in those bids, and they came at great cost to each of the bidders. These aren't cheap things to do, and I offer my sincerest thanks to each of the bidders. I believe I was listed as a subcontractor, our company was, for each of the bidders. So, I think they see that there's value in subcontracting with the local company, which is a service that we offer. I also thank the city manager for the foresight and what he mentioned in 2011, that a transfer station in this area would be the spearhead that would allow for this competitive environment, and Recycling Industries has invested its own dollars to that end. The matter before you, though, is to offer the two top bidders a chance to provide their best in final. One of the things that I ask you to consider, though, is there's a missing element. That missing element is, what do you get out of this as a city council and as a city entity? The city is an entity like any other entity in the state of California, and at this stage, there isn't any fiscal impact that's being reported to you. This shouldn't be the case when they come back for a final recommendation. You're in a position now where you can influence that and exercise your rights now and desires to ensure that you're fiscally and maintain your fiduciary responsibility to your own entity as the city of Yuba City. These are questions that I think that need to be answered before they come back with a final recommendation, whenever that happens. I understand it's a couple of months from now. One of the estimates that we've gathered is that for you to gather the fees that you're entitled to, which estimates are nearly in the $250,000 to $400,000 a year range, but that needs to be analyzed and presented to you, and I think you should know what that number is before you make your final decision, or what the potential of that number is. And a last note, I'm happy to announce that Recycling Industries has finally completed its application for transfer station, for expansion of that transfer station, and with that, we'll be ready to go and built and done by January of 2019. And I think that should be considered as part of this final decision that they present to you in a couple of months. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mike Lagan.
Good evening, Mayor Didball, council members. My name is Mike Lagan, General Manager of Recology Yuba Sutter, and I also reside in Yuba City at 859 Jones Road, near the racquetball club. Anyway, just wanted to let you know that I've been with Recology for 24 years, three years here in Yuba City, and have enjoyed every moment of the time here in Yuba City and working with this operation and the folks that I work with. I think, I just want to thank you for the time and energy that you're spending with this process, and it has been probably the most information about waste and recycling that you've had in a long time, so we appreciate that time and energy, and we look forward to continuing that process. I'm proud to, I'm proud to say that we have provided a very high level of service to this community, to the Yuba City community, and many of the folks that provide that service are here with us tonight from all departments, the office, the maintenance, drivers, the materials recovery facility, the transfer station, and even at the landfill and compost facility. So, we're really proud of the, what we provide, the employee owners provide to this community. So, with that, I'd like to ask, on behalf of those 120 folks that work for us at Recology Yuba Sutter, and the employee owners that you consider the alternate of just continuing to negotiate with Recology. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jackie Silman.
Looks different from here. Honorable Mayor Didball, members of the city council, my name is Jackie Silman, and I live at 1964 Cherry Street in Yuba City. I have been an employee owner for the past 18 years, and I know I speak for my coworkers tonight to say it's been a long, complicated, and at times, yes, very emotional process for me. I have been your community outreach manager for 18 years, and I formed many recycling partnerships during that time. Although you know me from the community relations aspects of my job, my main goal is to reduce the impact to the landfill and meet our state mandates. So, these partnerships and education, our community's diversion rate has gone, as we know, from 29% to 69% in those 18 years. So, our team worked diligently on this RFP because it was important to us, and we value those partnerships we enjoy with the Yuba City, and have always worked to make it valuable for the businesses, residents as well. So, Recology values that contact, contract, and the efforts go abum beyond for our communities. So, our focus is always to provide that highest level of service while educating to reduce, reuse, and recycle, which is, again, my job. So, now that the bidding scores are submitted and they've been tabulated, Recology did have the highest score, and I ask you to vote tonight to approve that staff's alternative recommendation to begin those negotiations with us. The winning bidder of the RFP, Recology, and I thank you for your time.
Next, we have Raymond, is it Dollywall? Is that a W?
Good afternoon, Mayor Didball and council members. My name is Raymond Dollywall. My wife, Callie, and I have three kids in the Yuba City Unified School District. I lived in Yuba City since 1979. My wife was born and raised in Yuba City, and my kids also. My wife and I decided to stay in Yuba City to raise our kids, even though we both worked in Sacramento. I worked in transportation management for 22 years and traveled the West Coast. As my kids are getting older, I decided to quit traveling and be home more, so I started looking for a local job. Today, I am an employee owner, working for the last five years at Recology Yuba Sutter. I recently got promoted to an operations supervisor from a driver foreman. Recology is a good company to work for a long term. It is one of the companies that I've worked for that gives so much back to the community. My family and I volunteered for multiple fundraisers and events. In my job, I speak with customers every day and know firsthand how much they really appreciate our services. My fellow employee owners, and I were so happy to hear, our proposal was ranked number one, so we can finalize the process. I respectfully request you consider the alternative to negotiate with Recology. Thank you.
We also have a request from Gary, is it Bybi or Bibby? Sorry. Bybi? Gary Bybi?
Gary Bybi. I don't see him here.
No, he's not here. All right, we have Sal. Okay, I don't want to butcher it.
Well, it happens every time here.
Hey, my name gets butchered all the time, so.
Yes, it does. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Salvatore Quenilio, Vice President, Group Manager for Recology. I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the team at Recology Yuba Sutter. As you know, and I think you guys are aware, that going through the RFP process is a stressful process for the staff. It's a lot of unknowns. A lot of those stress come home, come home with the employee, and it's not just at work, but it's in their family lives. There's a lot of unknowns on what's going to happen for the future. A lot of our employees would like to retire with Recology. They're invested. There's an ESOP portion of that, and going through this process has been a lengthy process, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge all of them for the amazing job they have done during this time, and how they've performed at a very high level throughout this stressful period of Recology Yuba Sutter. It says a lot about employee ownership. It says a lot about an ESOP company and the culture that we have, so I wanted to publicly thank everyone that's here today, and those that couldn't be here, and I'm sure that they'll pass that on to their team members. So, thank you for that. A little bit more, I'll try to keep this, you know, I'll try to sum this up. A little bit about myself, if you couldn't tell, I'm kind of a millennial, a couple years, near the millennial stage, or categorized or identified or profiled as a millennial. And I'm kind of an old-school millennial, and I say this because I have young kids. I play sports, they're very little, and it drives me crazy when everybody gets a trophy that doesn't, it's kind of the new way, it's kind of how our lifestyle is today, but we had the best score, and I feel like the second-best score is getting a trophy as well. I don't agree with that, but I understand the process, you know, I understand the recommendation, but I asked council to just consider renegotiating, renegotiating with Recology, because we didn't just pass the test, we scored the highest on that test. So, just ask for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tony Sinca.
Tony Sinca, Republic Services. So, just want to say how much we appreciate being a part of the process, and the goal of this process is to provide the best value for residents and businesses in Yuba City. And I think, you know, if we support the recommendation to negotiate with both companies, that's really the only outcome you're going to get. We've got two reputable companies. We've both put our best foot forward. The proposals were within 0.6% of each other, and the goal of this whole process, just to, you know, kind of remind everybody, is value for your residents and businesses. So, anyway, I humbly ask that you support the recommendation to negotiate with both companies, because I think the end result will be a positive outcome for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Avila.
My name is Lisa Avila, and I'm with Republic Services. I've been with Republic Services for 27 years, and I started when I was 11. We have spent a lot of time in this community over the past couple of years and have become vested ourselves in this community, and we think that we put a very good proposal together as well as Recology did. Like was said earlier, there are still stones that have not been turned yet. We don't want to come to a conclusion on something when we haven't really vetted all the scenarios yet, and that's where we really are today. There's solutions, but are they the best solutions, and can we come up with better ideas for the city? This is something that you're tasked to do, and you've done very well so far, and we would like you to continue with the process and negotiate with both Recology and Republic Services for the services here in Yuba City. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm out of cards, so, all right, Mark.
I've got 15 minutes, right?
Yeah.
Mayor Didball.
No, you don't have 15 minutes.
Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mark Mulliner, Business Manager, Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Local 228, Vice President of the Mid Valley Building Trades, and the President of the Marysville Central Labor Council. And I'm here tonight to say that it was, it was a great bid. I really believe that what you guys did here, I disagree with wholeheartedly, but I believe that your hearts were pure, and you were trying to get to the best end result for the ratepayer. At the end of the day, the company that stood out is the company that had been here, and a- And originally, Vasquez said that you were well within the market value of negotiating with them originally. And you chose to go this route and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to go through this, and you've come to within six tenths of the answer. And the answer is, Recology's number one. And Recology's a union, employee-owned company. And Republic's not. And the unions gave Republic an opportunity to sign an MOU, and they didn't do it. They danced around it, but they didn't do it. So now you want to pit two companies against one another. One pays union living wages, benefits retirement plan, and the other doesn't. So here we are, talking about, let's get them pitted against one another, and let's see if we can squeeze a little more blood out of that turnip. And maybe now they'll go to the wages and the fringes of the workers. Maybe that's what happens next. But I'll tell you right now, you have a third party that gets paid to negotiate. So, you know, it's in their interest to keep on negotiating, to keep on spending money. When you have the opportunity to sit with a good company, negotiate with a company, you're going to pass that opportunity or not so you can continue pitting two companies against one another. And at the end of the day, the end result, if Recology gets it again or doesn't, what have you set here for the tempo for any good business that's been here for any length of time? What is that message that's going out there? Is that we're not afraid to change the rules after the bidding process or after you work hard to achieve what we asked you to do. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Anybody else?
Worst place to be is after Mark. Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor Didball, members of council. My name is Dave Vaughn. I live at 732 East Hillcrest Avenue in Yuba City. I also serve as a Senior Director for Recology throughout all the operations that we operate in three states. I'm here tonight to thank you. I think the process made us a better company going through it. As Sal said earlier, thank you to the employees for doing all that you did through a very stressful time. The leadership team spent a lot of time trying to make sure we walked people off of ledges because it's a nervous time, and people don't really understand that part of it. And sometimes when we make decisions as an organization and why we bid and why we do certain things, it's not very clear to all because, you know, it's a difficult and challenging and complex process. However, I thank each of you, Recology employee owners, for doing what you guys do and will continue to do even as we continue through this process. So with that, it really was an opportunity to come up here and thank you guys tonight for what you guys have done. You've made us a better company. We look forward to being a part of one part of the process, whether it's negotiating the alternative or negotiating directly with us. But that is really in your hands, and we recognize, appreciate, and look forward to your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Scott Cunin, Mayor Didball and other members of the council, and also to this most august group we have here today. Dave and I have been involved in meeting with all of the jurisdictions in the RWMA for over two years in an effort to get this thing to go out to bid. And as I see some of the comments that have been given today, I know now why I don't ever run for a city council. The job that you have done takes courage and stamina, and you've done the right thing. I read in the papers, or have read in the papers, and received many comments. As many of you here know, there was tremendous pressure put on this particular group to not go out to bid, but to stay with Recology. Let me say upfront, I have nothing against Recology. I think you're a great team, and I think you do a good job. But I am for the ratepayer, and I think that it is only through, as Mr. Joe Sloan has said 20 years ago, it is only through the competitive bidding process that we get the best price for the ratepayers. I have heard many times that we should stay with Recology and not go out to bid because they've done such a great job. Just a few months back, maybe, can't remember what meeting it was, probably two, three, four months back, we, you as a council, awarded a bid to some work on Bog Road. And the winning bidder was a company from Sacramento. Which one was it?
Tykert.
Tykert, yes, it was Tykert. And one of the losing bidders was Lehman Construction. Now Hank Lehman's grandfather started that company here in Yuba City back in the 50s, almost 70 years ago. And yet he wasn't given any preference as far as the bids were concerned. And he didn't win. He didn't get the bid. And that's the beauty of competitive bidding. You've made your decision. You've hired a consulting firm, and they've come back with the recommendation as to what to do. And your decision, I believe your decision should be to follow their counsel and do what they suggest to do. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else? No? Okay. So we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for questions, comments.
To the mayor. I just, I need to make disclosure in regard to what the criteria within our proposal process was and that there'd be no contact from the proposers to the council directly. And I did, I've received two phone calls, one from David Cunin, and actually met with him in person, of which I told him I could not discuss anything related to the RFP process, and we kept it to other components of his business. But I just need to make disclosure on that. And then on Tony Sincahda, who called and thanked me directly for the process in which we're going through. That was the limit of the conversations that I've had from any of the proposers or anyone involved in the process itself. So I just want to make that perfectly clear and out front.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to disclose that I think it was two days ago, I got contacted by Recycle Industries asking if they were one of the ones that was to be included in the ex parte discussion. And I had to tell them that's right. And so we were unable to, we didn't discuss anything else except that he asked about his permit, what was going on with it, in his letter. And it sounds like that's been resolved and for his particular business, so.
Okay, and I'm lucky to say nobody asked me anything.
Oh, you missed out.
I missed out.
You missed out. Okay. And I will disclose as well that I got a call from, messages actually, from Dave Cunin, Jo Nies, and those were the messages that got left. I did respond. And basically, I mean, it was more of a thank you. But I did respond and make it very clear that I will not have further discussion at any level to meet or discuss anyone involved in the bidding process at this time. So, and we left it at that. So, aside from that, do we have any discussion or action?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a comment. You know, I want to acknowledge the fact that your council has raised a lot of questions of staff with regard to the processing and the proposals and that you also understand that you don't want to compromise the negotiation process. And so I just want to acknowledge publicly that the council's very engaged in the process, but also sensitive not to want to raise certain issues this evening that would compromise the process. And I think that clarity in that regard is well-deserved to comment upon, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I appreciate you saying that. And this is a part of the process. I understand that, you know, just from some of the comments being made, that feeling that this is the end, it's not. This is just part of the process. So this was setting that criteria and hitting a milestone, and now having a deeper dive. So that's where we are, and that's why we're back here with the presentation from the consultants.
To the mayor. Ms. McAfee, would you go up and get the slide up there that actually addresses this condition? Yes. This is kind of the explanation as to where we are at now. There are significant, while three definitely had great presentations and bids, proposals, two did stand out. But there were significant difficulties that needed to be resolved before we can move on. And this is how that was addressed by Ms. McAfee, is that there are some questions on the rate adjustment methodology. There's three different types that were put out there. I raised a question as to which one would be best for us to ask each one to look at instead of the one that they've presented. And then, of course, when this is all, you know, tipping fees, we need to know what's going on with that, and host fees, and many other things that theoretically could change depending on who does what when, who provides a service. And I think that we needed to address those with both companies to find out which one of the concerns is valid, which one has more weight to it to where the vulnerabilities and risks that they're talking about that Yuba City has, one may have a higher risk than another and actually move one company's scoring above the other in different categories. And so we needed to, maybe I'm saying too much, but we needed to really have time to look at that in much more depth because I had some very strong concerns about some of the proposals of the two. Very strong. And I would like them to be addressed before we actually go for the decision. And the only way is through a dual negotiations for them to show us which one is truly the highest risk for the citizens and the city itself on quality of service and also for the ratepayers, so.
You done?
Okay. Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, my voice is starting to.
Okay.
Okay.
To the mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the five waste management companies for participating in this. I know it was a very stressful time and period. Furthermore, now, on the other hand, I'd like to do some commenting. Our consultant said it's a tie. Well, in my eyes, a tie is 93.1 to 93.1 or 93.7, 93.7. That's a tie. It's not a tie. Recology respectfully won by six points. So that's just my say-so, my opinion. You know, it's been nine months. We have 120 employees. Very stressful times. I know it's been said, but I agree with it. You know, they don't know if they're coming home, they got a job five months from now or whether, what they're going to do. Myself personally, we, council had mentioned this months ago that Recology needed to sharpen their pencils, and I believe they did. They sharpened their pencils. And like they have commented here, they did come in number one. If we would have negotiated this six months ago, we would have saved the taxpayers a lot of money. And we'd be a lot further today than where we are at this time. We'd be a lot further. So it's just my thoughts. And my thoughts personally is, Recology came in number one, and I think we should go forward with them and take care of these matters up here. And we could nip the process and save us taxpayers a lot of money. Thank you.
To the mayor.
Go ahead.
So some of the questions that I have is what can drive unexpected costs moving forward? That would be one. And these don't, you can answer them tonight. If they would disadvantage the process further, I would ask that you not answer them. Did you see any drivers that were disadvantaged to any proposer within the process? So what I'm asking, were there any drivers within their formulas, anything else that may have disadvantaged any of the other proposers? So that's a question. And that is one to the other, not pointing it at anyone. I have a concern certainly regarding some of what was put out on the organic side. Currently, I'm aware of an issue at the Marysville facility for the organics where discharges from that facility are above limits that can be handled by our treatment facilities to include Yuba City's rather robust treatment facility. And could those, could future discharges then affect what we're looking at today? And then there's also a caveat in here regarding organics where there would be, by one of the proposers, where that would be renegotiated in two years. And that's of concern to me. Future waste management rates by the current provider, there's, I know that there's a rate increase, a smoothing increase that comes up later this year. And certainly, I believe that's September, October. I don't know exactly when it is. But that's coming up. And where would that take that to? Because there was a lot of assertion by the public that this process would drive pricing up. And people commented publicly about that. Phone calls have come to me from the public regarding whether or not the fees would go up, what would be required, and things like that. And when we looked at this whole process, the term was used comparing apples to apples. I see this now as we kind of have two different varieties of apples. One may store better. One may eat better. One may cook better. I have no idea. But now we need to get down to the specifics of what type of apple we talking about here and how are we going to do this? We have to remember that we went through, and this is for everybody, and certainly how I'm viewing this is we went through a request for proposal. This was not a low-bid process. This is a proposal process to get us to the next level. And that next level is what will give the greatest advantage, not to the taxpayer, but to the ratepayer in Yuba City. This is a ratepayer issue, not a taxpayer issue. Remember that there are businesses that are owned here that have commercial accounts that they're not a, they may pay sales tax, and they may pay unsecured taxes and other things, but they're not a resident here. So they're affected by some of these. And certainly, I was pleased to see where this whole proposal, as it came forward from all five of these very in-depth proposals, really drilled from all five of these very in-depth proposals, really drilled into a lot of that. But there's still some uncertainty within those commercial rates for me. And any assertion that hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money has been spent on this, for full disclosure, I'd like to know roughly where we are dollar-wise today to include the contract with Sloan-Vasquez and McAfee.
It's two different matters. One is a point of clarification, this cost will be borne by the successful proposer, so there's not a cost to the city's general fund. Secondarily, this is not, this is a package deal that you approved, so they don't get paid more for the process going longer. They get paid that fixed amount. And I believe the budget or the approved contract was about $66,000, and we usually have contingency in there. So I'd expect to be no higher than around $75,000 at the end of the day.
And I'd be more than willing to throw on, just for a matter of argument, about $30,000 worth of staff time at Yuba City that has probably been tied up into this.
And just to clarify, there might be confusion too, because I know there was a number of $160,000 that was budgeted by the remaining five jurisdictions for their negotiation process, separate and apart from the city of Yuba City.
So, thank you, Mr. Krieger, for the clarification, because, again, in trying to be as transparent as we can, to be involved with the proposers at this point, to have a number, a great number of the employee owners of one of the proposers that live here. This isn't about anything other than, we want truly the best service, the best price that we possibly can in a very competitive nature, and the rate payers come out the winner on this. For Sal, I love your analogy on trophies. I agree with you. I don't want to be too off cuff on this, but when two teams play for a playoff or we have a boxing match, it's really hard for somebody to walk into the boxing ring by themselves and punch themselves in the face to knock themselves out, or to get into a good scrap that's going to, that the true winner champion's going to come out of it. That's a football game, basketball championship. I don't care, hockey game. The women's hockey back in Korea was one of the greatest sports moments for me. I sat there and watched that thing on pins and needles. I watched the second-place team cry because they lost. They put their heart into it, and that's exactly what every proposer has done in this case, is they've put their heart into this, and it needs to be looked at from the greatest level that we can to establish what the very best service at the very best rate. It does not mean, and coming back in front of me, doesn't mean it's the low bid. And I believe that Mr. Cunin is going to help me have made a point. Please drive down Bog Road from Railroad all the way down to Garden Highway. Low bid. A job's not done yet. It wasn't done to specs. It wasn't done to the level that the company was, has the past expertise at. And we certainly have, still have, to go through some steps with them to rectify that road. It still has temporary markings on it, and it has been months, and it needs to be taken care of. But that's what happens at low bid. Somebody, you get the B team, and I don't like B team type work when it comes into Yuba City. We want A team. The way we get to the A team is, let's get in there, let's scrap for this thing, and I truly believe the very best service is going to prevail.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. I think I've already relayed my thoughts on this, is that this is a milestone. This is part of the entire RFP process. So now it's taking the next step, digging deeper into those concerns that we have. We have voiced them already, and we continue to go through the entire bid process that we've been presented. So without jeopardizing that conversation and discussing that, that's part of the negotiations that we will be doing as we continue forward, so. If there's no comments, other than that, we have a motion, action?
Well, through the mayor. I'm going to step up, and I'm going to say I'd like to make a recommendation that we enter negotiations with, number one, only Recology, and move on to the process, continue on through the process with Recology.
Do we have a second on that? So that motion dies, and since we don't have a second, do we have any other?
Through the mayor. In the best interest of our rate payers of our community, Yuba City specific, that we enter into negotiations with the top two proposers, Recology, Yuba Sutter, and Republic Services Incorporated, and bring back the proposer's best and final offers to the city council for final selection.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's go ahead and do roll call, please.
Manny Cardoza?
No.
Councilman Cardoza. Councilman Buckland?
Yes.
Councilman Cleveland?
Yes.
And Mayor Diball?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.